Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the October 17th Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order. And if everyone could stand for the invocation and the pledge, please.
So we pray, we be eternal God, we come first of all to thank you. Thank you for this day. Lord, we pray for the families of the deceased, people in Raleigh, North Carolina, especially the officer that lost his life, and his family. We pray that you guide us and lead us in this meeting tonight, that we make the decision that will be pleasing to thee. In the holy name we pray.
Amen.
Please face the flag. Our pleasure.
The flag is certified in the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Get ready for the agenda approval call.
Motion to approve Commissioner Allright, please. To, not to approve, to excuse him.
It's been moved and properly seconded. If everyone could vote on that. Just cause the limitations with this system. Can we do the roll call vote first and then vote on that second motion? That's all right.
Okay, so this roll call. Yeah, I see it. Set.
So everyone is present with the exceptions of the Vice Chair and Commissioner Nunley, who we were informed that he is going to be a little late this evening, but wished for us to start without him.
Now I would like to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Allright.
I second.
It has been moved and properly seconded. If we could all revote. Motion passes. It's time to entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Everyone could again vote. And now moving on to public addresses to the board. Madam Manager, do we have anyone signed up this evening?
You have one person signed up, Jeff Monaco.
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and read your statement. Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. Each person will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. A speaker representing a group of individuals in attendance will be allowed five minutes. Please state your name and address prior to speaking. A total of 30 minutes is set aside for public addresses to the board.
My name is Jeff Monaco. I am Chairman of the Cypress Group of the Sierra Club. My address is 3837 Lock Haven Lane in Grimesland. I'm here to talk about using environmental models to make decisions for the future. In the Pitt County Commissioners Meeting, October 3rd, I spoke about the need when making decisions to include environmental considerations and to use environmental models. I also said scientific models show that by the year 2020, excuse me, the year 2050, climate change will be causing bad things to happen in eastern North Carolina. I would like to expand on my statements about models, but first I want to explain my background. I am a licensed professional engineer and worked 40 years in industry creating scientific and engineering models. Three major companies use these models to make profitable business decisions. These were business decisions about agricultural and logistics machinery and included the technical fields of material strength, vehicle acoustics, motor thermal capacity, component reliability prediction, to name just a few. I want to continue the discussion of models by saying I agree with a comment made earlier or later in the meeting two weeks ago about all models being wrong. We in the modeling business use that phrase also. However, we combine it with another important phrase. The full statement we use in modeling is, "All models are wrong, many are useful." And because many are useful, all industries successfully use models in their decision-making. So what makes models useful? The answer is, they are powerful tools for defining trends. They are also powerful for predicting and comparing these trends. Think about Hurricane Ian a few weeks ago. The Weather Service provided models predicting Ian's path. Once a tropical depression formed near Cuba, the models predicted it would transition to a severe hurricane and travel north, likely going over Florida and into the Carolinas. The exact path of Ian, as shown by the early models, had a cone of uncertainty caused by the changing effects of water temperatures and the location and movement of high-pressure areas. The models changed over the seven days of the storm. However, the models provided information on the future path of the storm that was good enough to allow government officials to take actions that saved lives. Getting back to the environment, models that show negative climatic effects in the year 2050 have been widely reviewed and widely accepted. On the flip side of this, there are also models that show minimal effects from climate change. These models are not widely accepted by scientists and engineers. So what should government leaders do? Leaders and decision-makers should use the supported models to guide decisions, and leaders should put poorly accepted models on the back burner. And leaders should ask the creators of the models, and this is important, ask the creators of the models about their accuracy and how well they are supported. Then all leaders should use just the good ones. One last comment, scientific models guide the decisions in airplane design, car design, bridge design, and almost all medical procedures. Models for climate change are equally supported and usable. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Employee of the Month. Madam Manager, if you could.
Yes, we have one recognition this evening. If we can go down front. And if Catherine Adams would come forward, and she would be welcomed to be accompanied by the Department of Social Services Director Sharon Rochelle, if she would like to join us as well. Yep, right on the black spot. And then you can come on this side if that's okay with the chairman. So this is always my favorite meeting of the month, where we get to recognize our employee of the month. And I know I say it over and over, but it is what I really believe and totally sincere when I say employees are our greatest asset and they are the keys to Pitt County's success. So it is with great pleasure that today we get to recognize Catherine Adams. And Ms. Adams was selected. She is a supervisor within the Department of Social Services, and she was selected, her nominator said, because she is always uplifting and encouraging her team. She always makes herself available to help with cases and will step in to help whenever needed. She shows appreciation to her staff by choosing a week to celebrate each person on her team. She sends daily words of encouragement, and sometimes she'll even leave our favorite treat on our desk, said her nominator. She's been a supervisor for three years, employed with the Department of Social Services since 2007. She is embodying those values that we find to be so important, especially in this time where we are working so hard to attract and retain our staff. So thank you for all that you've done. We have a certificate of appreciation for you, which reads, "Certificate of Appreciation, Employee of the Month, October 2022, presented to Catherine Adams, Social Services, in recognition of your dedication and exemplary service to Pitt County Government and the citizens that we serve." And a small token within it, a $100 check to thank you for what you're doing. And Mr. Chairman can present that to you. Lean in for a picture. One, and three, two. Let's take one more. Three, two. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you.
Moving on to items for report. Mr. Hill.
Good evening, Chairman Fitzpatrick, Commissioners and Madam Manager. This afternoon, I bring to you the September 2022 Tax Collection Report. The Pitt County Fiscal Year to Date, July 1st, 2022 through September 30th, 2022 Combined Collection Rate for Real and Personal Property is 64.9%, 90%. The combined rate one year ago for real and personal property was 68.92%. Pitt County Tax Administration continues to pursue all outstanding taxes using the necessary remedies available through the North Carolina General Statutes. It's my recommendation that the board approve the September 22 Tax Collection Report as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. I entertain such a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second it.
It's been moved and properly seconded. If we could all vote.
Yes, ready.
Mr. Crew.
Good evening. Tonight, I bring you a good news item. In Pitt County, receiving the 2020 Government Finance Officers Association Triple Crown Award. We are one of 317 governments across the country, and one of five counties in North Carolina to receive this award. The Triple Crown Award recognizes government's achievement in transparently communicating its financial story and meeting professional standards. There are three parts to this significant achievement. All three have to be achieved in the same fiscal year. Receiving excellence in financial reporting, and this is actually our annual comprehensive financial report. And the second is earning the Popular Annual Report Award, which is our popular annual financial report. And the third is earning the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, which is our annual budget book. And I'm honored to be a part of a financial service team who worked to achieve this award in putting these books together for us in Pitt County. I would like to recognize Chris McDaniel. He's our Assistant Finance Director. He is not able to attend the meeting tonight. But I also would like to recognize Denise Urban, our Budget Administrator, and Kelly Dixon, our Budget and Grants Analyst, who are here tonight. For their hard work in leading our dedicated financial service team in achieving this significant award. Also, we'd like to thank the manager, our Budget Officer, for providing leadership and direction for our budgets. Also, I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners for your dedication during the budget process and passing our budgets. Finally, I want to thank our department heads, our elected officials, and our schools for their valuable work in preparing and carrying out our budgets. It's a pleasure to be part of a professional team here in Pitt County that serves our citizens. There is no recommendation for this item. It was for informational purposes only. Thank you.
Thank you.
My second item tonight is the September 2022 Finance Report for the General Solid Waste and EMS Funds. We are three months into the fiscal year at this point, or 25% of the year. For the General Fund, we have collected 38.04% of anticipated revenues and spent 22.60% of budgeted expenditures. Solid Waste, we have collected 54.26% and spent 20.52%. EMS, we have collected 37.05% and spent 27.77%. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, it's my recommendation for the board to approve the September 2022 Financial Report as presented. Thank you.
Motion to. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. If everyone could please vote. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Crew. Moving on to the Manager's Report.
Yes, we have a few items this evening. Your next meeting dates November 7th, 2022, and November 21st, both at 6:00 PM in this room. Second item I wanted to bring to your attention is something called Project Arise. This was a project through the Greenville Housing Authority whereby they received a federal earmark in excess of $2 million to build a structure on Best Road off of Bee's Barbecue Road, which will be 20 apartment housing units for foster youth aging out of foster care. It will serve those ages 18 to 24 as they transition into adulthood. And so I wanted to make the board aware of this exciting project and express my appreciation for the collaboration between the Department of Social Services, the Housing Authority, and all of the other entities involved to make this needed project become a reality. Look forward to a groundbreaking soon, and we'll keep you advised on the progress of that project. Thirdly, I have two introductions to make with new members of our Pitt County team. First, if Ms. Sharon Rochelle would come forward to the podium. Ms. Rochelle has been hired by the Department of Social Services Board to serve as your permanent Department of Social Services Director. I have enjoyed working with Ms. Rochelle the last two weeks, three weeks.
Three.
Three weeks, starting week three that she has been here. Her knowledge and experience will be a tremendous asset to our community, and so I introduce Ms. Rochelle to you this evening.
Thank you, everyone. I just want to extend my appreciation and gratitude to have this ability to be able to serve Pitt County residents, and will always give my very best in whatever capacity that would be. And I thank you all for all of your contributions to Pitt County as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And she makes a very nice, pretty bear. I have witnessed. The next introduction, if Jessica Williams would come forward. I'm thrilled to introduce to you Jessica Williams, who has been hired as our new Human Relations Coordinator, Community Relations Coordinator, for our Human Relations Commission. She will work directly with Florida Hardy and Human Resources as she carries out the work of this newly created Human Relations Commission. So Jessica comes to us with enthusiasm, excitement, and knowledge. She is here part-time, housed in the manager and legal hallway, and we are thrilled to have her onboard. So welcome and thank you for being here.
Thank you all.
And then lastly, actually Commissioner Nunley asked, but I will update him later. He asked for an update on the status of our American Rescue Plan nonprofit applications. We'll be bringing recommendations in the process with those recommendations back to you later in November, but wanted to give you a status update as to where we are. As you know, the board approved an application process between August 29th and September 29th for nonprofit applications for use under the American Rescue Plan funds. We received 26 applications during that time period, requesting a total of $24,926,714. As you know, we have set aside under $2 million within that bucket, and so we will now begin the difficult, continue the difficult work of committee review. So the board knows, as all has been in financial services and particularly with ARPA, this will be very process-oriented. And so I've heard folks say in describing the evolution of the American Rescue Plan funds, regulations, and expenditures, that sometimes it feels like we're building the plane while we're flying it. And we have definitely felt that to be true at some points in this process, but I believe we have maintained our objectivity and credibility by focusing on an objective process aligned with the regulations each step of the way. And so we will continue that as we review this. We will do it as a committee with senior leadership team, the attorney clerk, and Alex Norwood, who is our consultant with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, who specializes in ARPA funding. And we hope to review that and bring back a recommendation the second meeting in November. So that's your status update. 26 applications, $24 million.
Thank you.
That's all that I have.
At this time, entertain a motion for the items for consent.
Request to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. If everyone could please vote. Motion passes. See, Mr. Rhodes is already headed to the podium.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good to be with you tonight. We have three items back-to-back for your consideration tonight. This is not the first time you've heard about the Hurricane Florence Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, coined also locally as our buyout program. This, of course, is related to the event that happened four years ago. We have been awarded over $2.5 million to buy out about 16 residential properties, and we have funding for that as far as any buying out the homes, as well as any related services that go with that, appraisers, attorneys, surveyors, and so forth. Not surprisingly, this is just a map to show where those 16 properties are located. Most of these are congregated in the Griffin area, which was most hardly hit. We were back before you in June to say that finally the state is willing to take over some of these responsibilities. Well, we're back before you tonight to say that it's sounded good in theory, but in fact, it's probably better that we handle this here with Pitt County. We've done this for several other buyout programs. The state has struggled to get contractors in, is going nowhere fast. So we're recommending that this come under our purview. This does mean a new contract needs to be signed and executed, and in turn, all the funding will come through our offices, through our finance department, and we'll handle all the contracts accordingly. So with that tonight, we're recommending the motion to send your package tonight, that we bring that in-house, and that you allow the county manager to execute this new contract and move forward with the budget amendment that's presented.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I recommend a motion that we bring it in-house and give the manager authorization to do this.
Second it.
It has been moved.
Question.
Commissioner Colson.
James, of the 16 places that are going to be bought out potentially, what have the people done for the last four years? That's a rhetorical question. You don't have to really tell me that, but I'm sure they've done something. Will they be bought out at the value of what the house property was at the time of the hurricane?
Yes.
Okay.
Pre-disaster.
All right. So one minute.
If there's any other questions, I believe there is a motion and a second. If everyone could please vote. Motion passes.
The second item also is one that you're familiar with. It's been before you three times now. This is the fourth time. This is a time extension request for a special use permit for Pitt Solar LLC. We've given you the information as far as some of the other extension requests and how they were handled. We've also, in your package, included information from a session law that was actually approved by our legislature during the pandemic, which in effect has lengthened this particular permit even further. It allows it to run through June or January of next year. So under consideration tonight is a six-month extension to that, knowing that there's still some additional improvements that need to be made to the transmission line of nuclear energy that will supply the energy for this site, or actually, it will feed energy back into those lines. Just to orient you, remember this property. It's almost 1,000 acres. About a third of that is within the county's jurisdiction on the east side of the ETJ of the town of Bethel. So on your screen, you can see those hatched properties. Those are properties that are to be developed as part of this solar farm. There are several, or actually three criteria to be considered with this extension. Number one, has the permit been, has it expired? It has not to date. Has the permit recipient proceeded in due diligence and in good faith? We believe they have. And conditions have not changed so substantially as to warrant a new application. We have not changed any of the regulations associated with solar farms. So with that, we are allowed per our zoning ordinance to offer successive extensions, all at six months. If the extension is approved tonight, this will actually extend this special use permit on until July 11th of 2023, and we are recommending approval of that time extension, Mr. Chair.
Can we ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Rose, the maintenance of that solar farm, who's responsible? The growth of the vegetation in there is, can get a little out of hand sometimes, it appears. Does it?
Well, there are two things. Of course, we're requiring certain vegetation to go around to be a buffer, so we want that to grow very fast. So that's one thing, to kind of screen that from the highway and adjacent properties. But the, as far as where the arrays, the lines of the equipment that's in the field, that is up to the management of the facility itself to keep that maintained. We do not have any regulations to that effect, I can tell you.
Well.
Are you talking about mowing grass?
Yes.
That sort of thing.
Because it gets sort of high and unsightly right there on the front, going into Main Street.
Well, remember, that one within the town of Bethel was developed under Bethel's regulations, not the county's. We would have required screening and buffering around the front.
Oh, okay.
That's the difference.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm moved to approve the request of Pitt Solar.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. If everyone could vote. Motion passes.
And number three, again, as a follow-up to your August 22nd directive and authorization for both moving forward with construction of the recreation community centers, as well as an update to our recreation and park master plan. Allison, Alice Kings here, our Recreation Coordinator, and myself would just like to give you some ideas about our recommended timeline and sequence of activities to help achieve those items. Pretty quickly, I'll run through just three main items, starting at the end of this year, running into mid-next year, is the site plan development. And this might seem a little out of sequence as far as a plan being established first, but the site plans needed before the comprehensive plan in this case, because we're getting ready to start construction. And we've not really considered how things would be laid out on the site at our office park north of the river. So we would like to proceed with the site plan development first, as to where that community center is going to be placed, how recreation, outdoor recreation might be tied in, especially to some of the existing trails on-site. So we're looking to secure a consultant within that six- or seven-month period to work with our architect, Jimmy Height, that's designing the buildings as we speak. And that is for the site plan north of the river. We're also looking to update the site plan for the Alice F. King District Park. A lot of things have happened out there over the last several years that we'd like to have shown an updated plan. Certainly, as part of the north-of-the-river campus, we feel like it's very necessary to get out and get information from the public. Those people that are going to visit that site, want to be engaged in that site to find out what the needed programs and activities will be. So that will be, that will help us shape that site plan and move forward. So that's item number one. And this is just to give you an idea of what the current plan for that district park looks like. The. is just to give you an idea of what the current plan for that district park looks like. It needs to be updated. We've actually already added on top of this where the proposed site is for, as shown on the screen here in red, that's the area where the new recreation center will go there, adjacent to the existing community schools and recreation site. So we've kind of already started amending this plan, but it does need some additional work. Real quickly, we've just started with a schematic for the north-of-the-river site. And again, just to orient you a bit, this is the pond with government circle that goes around the edge of it, the agricultural center. The red block here is also the proposed community center, and this is where the architect has proposed to site it. And we've generally taken some blocks from the Alice F. King District Park and put out here for soccer fields and maybe a ball field, not knowing exactly what's going out there yet. But that will give you just a general idea of when we move forward, what the outdoor space could be used for. There are also some other blue lines on here that indicate some of the existing trails, so we want to certainly incorporate that, as well as the arboretum that's located right in this area, just adjacent to the agricultural center, and also between that and the proposed community center. The second part of this would be to update our 2015 Recreation and Park Master Plan. We feel like this would be folded into next year's budget, and we would move forward with securing a consultant to assist us with the update, inventory those existing facilities, and also identify what some of our future needs are. Part of that also, and we've hedged on this before in talking about the staffing structure for our recreation facilities, especially with these two new complexes. So that would be part of what would be coming out of that plan as far as recommendations for that staffing structure. And then finally, kind of the implementation of a portion of that master plan would be the restructuring of the staffing resources, and also, we've mentioned about the joint use of facilities policy. That's between the county and the Board of Education and using some of the recreational facilities on school properties. That particular policy needs to be updated, needs to be tweaked quite a bit. So, Mr. Chairman, that's what we have to offer as far as the sequence and some of the items that we'd like to have proposed. Two action items, authorize the manager to execute a contract for the update of the site plans, up to $35,000, and that is already included in this year's budget. No new funds. And also authorize staff to develop. We'll go ahead and start with the RFP for the Recreation and Park Master Plan and include funding for that in next year's budget. Welcome. Questions?
Question. When do you plan to break ground? We don't know. That's part of the master plan?
That is part of the American Rescue Plan discussions, and when action is taken on that, paired with the building plans and the site plans.
Okay.
So all of that is to say, I would love to say sometime late next year, but that's to be debated.
Is there a timeline set up for receiving input from the community?
That will be, I would say, early next year, 2023. We would see, if we're developing those site plans, we need that public input early on.
Sounds good. Thank you. What you need? A motion to approve the report and move forward?
To recommend.
So done.
Second.
It has been moved and properly second. Everyone could vote. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Good evening. It's always a tough following, Mr. James. Good evening, everyone. Happy to be here. First, before we start on that, I just want to thank you, as far as the ARPA money goes, for your constant support of the EMS community. It does not go unnoticed, so we really appreciate that. But I'm here before you tonight. We've got an application for a non-E franchise. It would be our seventh current franchise from Ahoski Ambulance Service. They're looking to come into the county. They applied early summer of 2022. They've answered all the questions that I have. Their application appeared to be complete, and they've been responsive. I've not asked them to have a storefront here in the county yet, pending some approval. But brought it before the Oversight Committee at the September meeting, and there was no negative comment, so that was approved unanimously. And so I would recommend that they be approved for a franchise pending storefront and then inspection of their facility. But otherwise, we'll take any questions.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second.
Are they here?
So, to answer your question, yes, this is Ms. Allison Slade of Ahoski Ambulance Service, and they are here tonight. I'm sorry, I was after that.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
And the motion is approved. Moving on to appointments to the Human Relations Commission. Madam Manager?
Yes, it is being recommended that Ms. Mary Moy be appointed to serve as the Village of Simpson representative on the Human Relations Commission, and that Mr. Carl Wilson be reappointed to serve as the Town of Bethel representative on that same commission.
Move approval. Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Everyone could vote.
Ms. Manager, when will the commission restart meetings?
This month. Your, is it tomorrow? Tomorrow evening is the first restarted meeting, and it will be led with Jessica as your chair.
All right, thank you.
Motion passes. Moving next to the Aiden Planning Board. Madam Manager?
Yes, it's being recommended that Jerry Cox be reappointed to the Aiden Planning Board.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. If everyone could vote again, please. Motion passes. And moving on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Ward?
No comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Hawkins?
I do want to say, in speaking about the Arise program, I want to say that Congressman G.K. Butterfield is responsible for that $2 million going to the Housing Authority. And that's really, really wanted to get that done before he left office, and that is happening.
We certainly appreciate his assistance.
It's been a while since we've had anything.
Yeah.
Commissioner White?
No comment.
Commissioner Mallow?
New comment.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes. It's about time for me to say we need to be conscious about the trash again. And so with that in mind, I've already contacted some volunteers in the area. I'm always conscious about District 2, and we need to let people know that we love the place we call home. And perhaps the month of November, I'm asking the volunteers to come together and plan how they will clean their areas in Pitt County. And this is a request that I think, I was in some meeting, and Mr. Derry sort of whispered in my ear, and I have stepped to the plate on that. So I'm looking forward to all of you volunteering. Just give me a call. You know how to find me. You find me for everything else, and we will coordinate getting the trash up again in our areas. I'd like to thank also, I don't know whether it's Mr. Rose or not, but the cutting of the bridges in District 2 look much better, but we have to get the trash up where they are. Thank you so very much, and I appreciate all you do for making Pitt County look good.
Thank you. Commissioner Long? Commissioner Colson?
On the Arise program, I'd like to have more information on it. I'd like to know who would be selected, how they will be selected, what qualifies them. And now I'm going to ask a really difficult question. Okay, so 20 units, how many people will that serve? But what is the real need? Almost always, we have more demand than we have services. And so I'd like to know what percentage this really addresses. Thank you.
If no additional comments, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been moved and second. If everyone could vote.
Is this a record for us?